Being out of the later than we need to be, so I appreciate that. New business, we have the lit redistribution resolution. We discussed it last meeting. The part of the purpose of this meeting was to address the lit. What we didn't know at the time was the, we didn't have a financial analysis. And as has, each of you have seen, the reanalysis, I think one of the things that we just weren't aware of is the significant impact that we have on our school systems and libraries. I think that's significant and impacts the nature of the conversation. I will hear any comment that you have if there's anybody who wants to move forward with this discussion. They'll speak now. Seeing none, I think we will dispense with that. I think one of the things I appreciate is the fact that, as I shared, I think before, one of the dynamics at play is in order to make the best decision possible, that's going to require all of us and it will require the best information that's available. And I think by seeking non-expert information to have a clear understanding of what implications of decisions are, I think it's helpful to proceed. I think one of the challenges is, you know, the blessing and curse of these public conversations are that we're having a conversation with public, public gets a chance to hear, and thank you all for being here tonight, gets to hear the nature of our conversations, in which direction we go, what we think about this, what we think about that. Remind the public that not a decision has been made about the 2026 budget. And yet, part of the curse, I suppose you might say, is that reporting in media record conversations we have without decisions that we've made. And that creates the potential to have swings of idea and opinion and emotion and all are just a part of the deal. It's challenging, I mean, it's challenging from our perspective. I really appreciate my colleagues being willing to be up and able to be as honest as we have been in this conversation, knowing that all of this is done publicly. It's hard having conversations where not really sure, gee, what direction do we want? Go this direction or that direction? What's the best thing to do about this? What's the best thing to do about that? Imagine having some of your important family conversations being held for the public to hear. It is difficult. And yet, I'm pleased with the dialogue that we've had and the deliberation, the consideration for each other. That, I guess I'm making my comments out of turn. But that's the case relative to the redistribution resolution. So, lots of new money. The commissioners have asked for a consideration for repair of the Star Bank parking lot. Mr. Gardner, you want to come and tell us what that's about? And why do you believe that those resources are necessary?
Good evening, Council. Got some documents for you. Got a report back from Structure Care related to the Star Bank building and showing the repairs that are needed, some, most in an emergency nature. And I have some photos up here after they've done their analysis. If you'd like to look through those again, we discussed a lot of those back in, I believe, January or February. You can scan through it just kind of quickly, just give them time to look. Just structural issues with the Star Bank building. The ramp, we closed that early in the year based on just a view by what we saw prior to having our engineer take a look at it. We closed the ramp early in the year. We had core samples drilled on those, found that we did have issues there and we should continue to keep the ramp to the second floor closed on the building. We got estimates to take care of those things. If you go to the handout I just gave you, I think page eight, kind of. Sorry, I'm kind of fumbling around here. There's a variety of issues there. Water intrusion is the biggest issue from the top level of that particular building. But we found during our core samples that the chloride levels were high in the concrete in those core samples. That being said, that high level chloride turns to hydrochloric acid, which is very destructive to concrete structures. And it basically is trapped in there because of a membrane at some time that was put on that third floor, the top level, I should say, of the parking garage. And it traps that and doesn't allow it to breathe and it basically rags from the concrete. It's like a meratic acid, it just starts eating away at the concrete structure. So, we've had all that assessed and got our quotes in related to that building. Originally, back in, back in January or February, I can't remember which meeting that was, we had the cost of, these were just guestimates at the time, not knowing for sure, but the Star Bank building to rework the parking garage, we had asked for $800,000 and the quote came in at $859,000. So, it wasn't far off for that dollar amount of an item. That picture you're looking at right there is one of the more critical issues. We did pass an emergency declaration back in July, I believe, because some of that concrete had failed. So, we had in there for $800,000 on the bank building along with the, on top of that was the roofing. I don't think we're doing a re-roof on that right now, we're going to plan on doing a repair. But in that full appropriation request, the first year, which was 1.258 million, included the chapel, the chapel roof and paint, the Star Bank building, the roof on the Star Bank building, the N-triple-C remediation repairs, the clock tower came to 1.258 million. We did have, if you look at page eight, 859,500 on the Star Bank garage itself. And then, as a, basically a level two, the next items that need repaired, which we probably would not get to this year, was 56,700. That's like future repairs, but the immediate repairs that we were asking for back in February were 800,000. And then, the level three repairs that need done within two to three years is $47,000 to get that building back in good condition. Many of you wouldn't know, but when we purchased that building, we paid, I believe, $678,000 for it. We have two tenants over there that basically, we mortgaged that at the time or got a loan on it at the time. And the rents from that building took care of the mortgage payment, basically. So, when interest rates were doing real well, previous council chose to pay that building off when we were paying off other debt back during those days. And that money has continued to come in through rent and that can be used for some of these future maintaining, maintenance costs, not this structural thing. You can see right there in that picture on the right, is very telling. And that's the bottom side of the ramp. So, that ramp will be taken completely down. Some of the pillars and beams on that will be, have repair issues and then the new decking will be put on that. So, we had put the appropriation in for $1 million, not knowing exactly where we were going to be. But it looks like we will need about almost exactly what we asked for at the beginning of the year, that 1.258, to take care of everything that we have pending, which would not include that additional, I'll take that back. 1.258 plus the $60,000 in addition, because it was 859 and we'd already, we'd only plugged in 800,000 for that. The 57,000 and the 47,000 numbers, I don't think we'd get to this year anyway and that appropriation would die at the end of the year. So, we could back those off a little bit. There is a balance of $370,000 in there. So, our appropriation right now, the original appropriation was for 500,000. Asking for that other million, you could back off these additional costs if you'd like and we would be right at that 1.3 million total expenses. I'm sorry, 1.258 million plus the 60, yes.
Could you share with us a little more about the Star Bank building? What is this?
The Star Bank building was.
What was the income coming from that?
Yeah, the income from that goes into the Star Bank building fund. Like I said, it was paying the mortgage payments for that until we paid it off. It's continuing to go in there, there's a little over $200,000 in there.
So, there's 200,000?
Two, 224, I believe, if I remember right.
Can you guys speak up?
Unless it's changed since this report, which was 9/19, you had $245,442 of the 33 cents.
245, is the present amount in the Star Bank, the fund that?
Well, minus anything we might have pending in the next claim cycle. That's where I came up with that other number, but it's not enough to worry about. Those would be for everyday maintenance issues, maintaining the building, not, yes. Maintaining for the future, sealing the parking lot in the future possibly or sealing the top floor of that bank building.
Do you have a clear sense of what the income on a monthly basis is against the expenses typically?
I didn't, I don't have that tonight, I can get that for.
Then he can't have the money.
We've obviously accumulated 240-ish.
Right, I believe, other than these capital project items, I'm very confident that it will maintain itself at no cost to the county. We currently have council governments over there, they used to be in this building. This building was needing more space, the opportunity came to purchase that building at the time. So, council of governments is over there, Star Bank is the other tenant over there, the Veterans Administration is over there, and the Coroner's Office is over there. Those are the four tenants there, four tenants right now. There's 91 parking spots over there, all of them assigned to someone. 18 of them, I think, goes with Star Bank and is in their contract, but they get 18 spots. To build a new parking garage today, the parking garage is about $40,000 a spot, a parking spot, which would put that building worth, just the parking garage alone, worth $3.6 million. Like I said, we have 762,000 in that and you're possibly adding another eight to it. You're still half of what the parking garage is worth, not counting the bank building itself.
So, there's 73 parking spots available that are at Star Bank?
Yes, right, that are assigned to county employees.
Are those that are currently used or are those, I mean, some of the shoes shut down?
Yes, we have shut, we shut the ramp down and some of the parking spots where we had above head damage.
Yeah, so are the 91 inclusive of the ones that are shut down?
Yes, that's totals parking spots.
So, how many are shut down? Do you have a sense?
I'm just guessing, a dozen, maybe half dozen parking spots are closed at this time on top of the ramp. It's a little bit harder to maneuver because the ramp was a one-way-in ramp straight to the Star Bank parking, which allows them to walk right in at ground level because that building sits on a hill.
So, what benefit does the parking garage have to the average taxpayer?
Well, you have 91 spots over there. Those other 73 spots are assigned to employees of the county. So, we had not near enough parking for the county and that's a big reason why that bank building, I think, came into play. More space at the courthouse, more parking for the county, so to do county business, basically. Those parking spots, otherwise, those 73 parking spots, they're out here parking in businesses, parking spots because there's just not enough parking.
So, Rick, on this report that I had run with the financial report fund, it was like I said, it ran on 9/19, it was just last week, Thursday, Friday, something like that. So, at the time, in the capital improvement fund, you had only spent just under 120,000 of the 500,000 that you had already appropriated.
Today, it's 128.
Okay. So, 370 of 800 and that would be about 500,000 that you need to finish up what Phase 1 would be?
I think that's right.
Approximately, I mean, I'm wrong.
Well, you have other things that are out there pending too that were part of that mix.
Other questions?
I had some questions just in regards to the Capital Asset Improvement Fund in general. I think we see that this is something that needs to be addressed at some point. Do we have an idea of how much interest is going into that fund by the end of the year? What we expect to have gone into that fund?
There's, I can tell you the fund balance today is 2.5 million.
Okay. Is there a, like a three-year plan on what to do with those funds once they're received into there?
We are assessing other needs throughout the county on the assets of the county. We basically took on these larger tasks first, especially that bank building, which is a safety issue. But, as I discussed back in February, you have the barn out at Linwood, needs a new roof on it. There's metal issues on that barn, that's where all the highways mowers and things like that are all store tractors, things like that. So, we'll reassess that the first of the year and see what else of the assets that need.
Are there any that you expect to be as large as this one?
I don't know of anything that would be that large.
Would there be a willingness to fund, like body armor and vehicles for the Sheriff's Department out of this fund?
That ordinance does not allow for that.
It does not?
No, no.
Okay, I thought the information we had from Indiana Code that it did.
I'm sorry?
I thought that the information we had from Indiana Code had that on there.
The Indiana Code that you're quoting is a Q capital fund, which does allow for that, which is a tax rate fund. And we're talking about a home rule fund that was passed by ordinance within the county. So, it has to follow the ordinance that passed.
Ms. Keller, is that something that you looked into for us? See if that was something that could be funded out of there?
It could be funded out of the Q cap fund.
So, this is different? So, then the answer would be no to that?
The answer is no. It would take, it would take the action of the commissioners and also an action of the Board of Finance to make a change there. We have Board of Finance meeting in January.
They have the ability to do it.
If we have assessments for buildings and other infrastructure by that time. I don't know that that policy would change or not, it depends on what we might have coming.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just had a few things I had written down.
Just so you'll know, we are, after that jail's built, we're looking at maintaining about $160 million in assets. $2.2 million is very little money to maintain $160 million in assets, so.
Or maintaining the current jail too, right?
Right, until we open a new jail, true.
So, I know that the Board of Finance met in January, you just meet once a year?
Unless there's a need, of course, I came in January, so.
So, I was curious if the Board of Finance, I know you can't speak to this because you're one of four.
I can, I can tell you my opinion.
Would consider amending that policy so that we could have some of those funds back into the general fund so that we can fund contracts that were entered into and honor those contracts? I know that back in March, when it was negotiated, we probably didn't have all the information on the effects that SB 1 would already start having on our revenue. And so, it just kind of puts us in a bad position, having that interest, not having that interest, but then also having a contracted fund. So, I'm asking if that's something maybe the Board of Finance would consider amending that policy to allow some funds to come into the general?
I think we would assess our assets first and then see where those.
So, they care more about themselves if they're officers.
And then, I don't doubt that we need this fund, obviously we do. But if we can't support our employees with raises and have them stick around, we need to have people to fill those buildings. So, I would just say that we need to make sure we take care of our employees. And then, just another note, I spoke with a, this is not directed to you, this is just to the council in general. I spoke with a former DLGS commissioner about the fund, because you know, it's kind of been a gray area. Everyone has said that it's kind of vague, the language is vague on governing body as to who had the authority to make that decision. And he said that usually when it's vague like that, that you look at it, there's an administrative side and there's a fiscal side to it. And he would make the determination based on if it's a fiscal issue, that he would determine that governing body is the county council. If it's an administrative issue, he would determine that it was a commissioner's responsibility. There's that information. And that's all I have, thank you.
I, as everyone knows, we're kind of rehashing the same thing we've been hashing over. We got a legal opinion on that and we got a Board of Accounts' opinion on that. And I believe the Board of Accounts is correct on that and they would be the one audited, not the DLG.
Well, hopefully we can get that cleared up at some point as far as, for the sake of clarity, you know?
Yeah, my personal opinion is very clear, but for those who might want to spend some of that money, it's not as clear, so.
And Commissioner, if you could just, so everyone in the public knows and so we can just be reminded, can you remind us why we established, or you established this fund? We had some problems several years ago.
Yeah, thank you for that question. If you remember back several years ago, when interest rates were good, we started paying off debt, we started putting money in the rainy day fund. We played off, paid off an $8 million sheriff pension plan. And this was the next step, is it was a capital asset fund. Most counties that have a capital asset fund, or I would say, most, most all counties that have a capital asset fund have an additional tax rate to fund that. We chose, as the county commissioners and me as a previous auditor, looking down this road, funding that with interest income, with investment income rather than taxing the taxpayers one more time. That was the reason for that. We had a remediation of this courthouse when asbestos was discovered during, that started out, I don't know, 2017, putting in a new boiler and air unit, was where that started. Upon investigation, came across asbestos, closed down the building, moved out the building, remediated asbestos and had to take on debt because of that. And the whole purpose for this is to maintain buildings without having to take on debt or tax additionally tax the taxpayer, which personally I feel we're overtaxed at the beginning, so.
And it's not general fund, I mean, it's new money from this.
It's not general fund money. And one thing we need to realize is over these last years, we were not budgeting all of that money, a portion of that. And keep in mind that there's a portion of that that the council, that can and will go into the general fund. And it's the, it's the period of time between collections, that's when we collect from all taxpayers, the treasurer collects, during that period of time and his time of disbursement, there's a period of time in there where that interest can be calculated and would go to the general fund. So, there is a portion of it that does go to the general fund or will go to the general fund. Now, I don't know, I've not talked to Dan recently about that to see if he's done that for this year or not. He may be waiting till the, to the second tax payment. There's a portion of that will go into the general fund. So, you're not losing all of that. I think for this year, it's about $800,000, but I'm winging it, so.
In several counties, I have to virtually attend those on Zoom, the legislative committee meetings, and we just had one last Friday. And several of the counties in Indiana are wanting to establish some kind of fund for this because they get in trouble when something happens, they don't have money in the general fund to do it. And some of us are, you know, are kind of looking at this county to see how we've done that. Those are just things that have been mentioned in those meetings.
We, for the council that's been here for a period of time anyway, I think Todd might have been there when we had a neighboring county come up to us talking about their rainy day fund, they didn't have a rainy day fund. And because of Madison County, there's other counties that are following suit, just like you're talking about on that particular fund, and finding theirself in a better shape today than they were because they're watching what others are doing. That's always a good thing to do. You can pick the best out of it and dispose of the bad things and come out in a lot better shape. And I think that's where we are today.
So, Rick, of the 245,000 that's in the Star Bank account, none of that can be used for any of the repairs?
I don't know why you'd want to, they're not capital, that's not a capital asset fund and we're doing capital improvements. So, that's intended to be a maintenance fund to take care of those buildings on routing maintenance, not building new structures or a million-dollar expenditures, just know what it's designed for. And I don't know why we would want to even go there anyway, because that's going to hurt you in the future. Because that money's sitting in a fund and it's in a fund designed to do exactly what we're asking for it to do. I don't know what else you'd do with it, except do what its intent is.
No wonder you found bankruptcy.
Does it do repairs on the Star Bank building?
I'm talking about the capital asset fund, Ms. Keller?
I'm talking about the Star Bank building.
Okay, I wasn't though.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Could he get any further?
Well, I appreciate that, I think it's good that we are forward-thinking. I think a lot of times our county is reactive instead of proactive, so I think it's a good thing to have.
There's no forward-thinking.
But when we say that we, it's good that we have these funds, we don't have to raise taxes in order to do these things. But when it takes away from money that we might normally have in the general fund and then causes us to where we have to consider raising taxes for the general fund, it's kind of six one, half dozen the others.
With all due respect, I almost think this council as a whole, unfortunately, would have spent part of this money already if it wasn't already in this fund and then we would have this, no disrespect intended. I'm kind of glad it's in a savings account where it was cited by the body. You should have cited it and that's where the money is and now we have money to do this project.
No.
And Rick, I really do appreciate the forward-thinking and I do think that the Capital Asset Improvement Fund is a good idea. It's just that this has been done the same year that the cumulative bridge rate was raised and I understand the forward-thinking with that also, with that diverted about a million dollars from the general fund. And it was done the same year that the merit officer contract was renegotiated. And so, all of these things that you've done at the same time, which I can appreciate all of them, have really put us in a tough position for the budget, you know, for the budget time. And so, I think that's, I think that's just kind of where we're at.
If we weren't doing it from the capital asset fund, you would be doing it from the general fund, which is, I mean, the results are the same. And what you would have, if you don't do those repairs on that building over there, there's going to be a time probably before the first of the year that that building will be shut down completely. The reason I wanted to try to get on this agenda today, and I appreciate you getting on your agenda today, was because we're bumping up against winter time now. If you remember back in February, we originally asked for an amount that we didn't have it. We ended up, I think, at the second meeting getting 500,000 and then there wasn't money in the engineering line that we needed. So, it's pushed us out closer to winter. But I could see that building closing by the first of the year, which you're in violation of your lease with your tenants. They're guaranteed spots in that parking garage. If you close down that parking garage, the bank wouldn't have any parking. And if it gets to it, we've closed off spaces in that parking. And if it gets to it, we've closed off spaces in that parking garage, but not the parking garage itself because we walked it with our engineers and determined what needs closed and what doesn't. Sections of it would have to be closed during the construction. But if you close that, you're going to be in violation of your lease with the bank building that guarantees them parking for the bank. You close that, you lose a tenant, you have an empty building, you got a homeless camp in the parking garage. I just see where it would end up. In an empty building in downtown Anderson, which we certainly don't need.
I have an email.
That's the reason it's so important.
I have an email from a council government's employee stating that a hunk of cement fell on her car. And she is wondering when in the world something's going to be done with it.
If you, if you, would you mind backing those pictures up a little bit, Cara, to the overhead beam that had the hole in it? That's the ramp there, that's where we're doing the core drillings. I think, yeah, I think we went too far. One similar to that right here, that's not it, but. Anyways, a chunk from one of those overhead beams that fell from there. That's the ramp itself, there's not, we closed that ramp early on just by what we were seeing until we got the engineers on and they affirmed that yes, you need to keep that ramp closed and use your other entrance. That's the railing, I believe, on the ramp. Yeah, that might have been it, Cara. Anyway, it's one of those issues right there, right there. That's it. So those have rebar strand metal inside those cavities. They would go in from the top of that and repair those from the top. And then cosmetically, it's not such a big deal, but it's the structure inside there that's so important. The company we're using is Structure Care, they're dealing with a parking garage for Home Depot, I believe, in Chicago right now with the same age and style of building with these same issues. That was the closest one they had to what we have, and it was a gigantic old fat building. Yeah, I guess it says there in the notes, so.
Just to clarify your previous comment, you're suggesting that if we don't do this, it closes by first of the year?
Or very shortly after that.
And the money you need right now to do that particular repair is six hundred, five hundred thousand? Is what money you still have remaining?
I have four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred.
To fix that level one problems, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand minus what's in the fund. But you have other things that are in the mix in that fund right now, too.
Can you speak up?
You have pending planes, you have. See, you got the painting out at the Bronenberg Chapel is getting ready to start, that's a thirty-one thousand dollar expenditure. The chapel roof's been done, the M-triple-C repairs have all been done, clock tower's been half paid for. So you have the other half of that, you have the painting at the chapel.
Is that how much is thirty-one thousand?
Yeah, that's not, that's not been done or paid for yet, so.
So just, again, would you try to clarify, of the three hundred and seventy thousand dollars that are in the fund currently, how much of that is committed?
All the painting is committed, that's thirty-one, three.
So try to get at a number here.
Yeah. Well, no, the painting's actually a little bit more than that. It's thirty-five, seven fifty because of what we've done. They, we are doing, we came in under budget on the roof out there. Our total budget for the roof, gutters, painting, aluminum work, plaster work in the basement, the budget we had back in February was seventy-three, three, and we spent sixty-seven thousand. So we were six thousand dollars under budget on that, on that part. But you still have the fifty percent of the clock tower and the painting's not been paid for yet, so.
There's a thirty more of the painting and there's how much of the clock?
I think it's eighteen, so it's close to fifty. That's not been paid yet, yeah.
Oh, about fifty thousand.
Close, alright.
So when the fifty thousand or so is paid out of that, there will be about three hundred and twenty thousand.
Right, yeah. Yeah. So.
Well, then can you close the four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, just number five hundred thousand?
I originally had that they needed four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred more. But then if you add a fifty thousand, then that gets to five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred.
Check my math.
Yeah, you need the, you need the eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, the painting of thirty-one thousand, the eighteen thousand on the clock tower. Minus your balance.
So we're right at, we're, are you getting about five forty?
Yeah.
Five hundred and forty thousand in addition to what's there should cover the urgent expenses.
The urgent expenses, yes. Now, we will be running new water lines to that chapel. I kind of pictured to say that that doesn't get done this year. We're looking into it and getting prices on it, but I would say we're not going to get there.
Other questions or? Got it.
I make a motion, we approve in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Motion, Councilor Keller, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Colt, is there other discussion? All of ABCI?
Is there a public comment? What's about, public comment?
Yeah, actually. We're going to kick it up, Joe. If you have something that you'd like to share, please feel free. Hi there, sir.
Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jim James. I live at seven oh five, Oxford Road. This is the age of union township. On the buildings, you know, the lady council person here asked a good question. Mrs. Keller said, what good are they to the taxpayers? Well, I'm a sixty-year taxpayer in Madison County. And what good is it to me? None. And I can remember when the lady Otis Cox and then they bought this old Fleischer's building over here. And the only thing that was in it for several years was an old step ladder. That's all it did. There's huge empty buildings all around. And you can bet that some of those people, they can't sell them to businesses, don't kid yourself. They talk about what a great deal it is. Well, if it's such a great deal, sell them to the businesses, now that they can't do that. Big, huge buildings, empty, all around there. Out on scattered field and stuff, General Motors name is left. No, they can't sell them then. But they'll come running there telling about what a good deal it is for the taxpayers. And I don't know if there's anything in that old Fleischer's building now or not. They might be there, but I, it's, the building is, no. And Rick Gardner is a good public servant, you know. He took a office that was in pretty bad shape and turned it into a first-class operation, you know. So, but I would disagree with those people. That looks like it's about ready to fall down, you know. And I don't think we should invest in it. I'm not, like I said, sixty-year taxpayer, what benefited it to me? None, absolutely none. But there are going to be people coming running to you telling you about what a great deal one of these flop houses is for the taxpayers. Ain't no great deal to us. And I, are you going to have a discussion on the budget later on there with, from the public?
There's a, there's a time of public comment coming right after this issue.
Yeah, yeah. And that'll continue for the budget, right? And I want to thank you for the way to the last meeting, that you put the people up front on the comments instead of letting them sit here for half of the night. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Don't sell that flop house to anyone.
Catherine Callahan-Lapel, I've got several questions about this building. How long ago did it get paid off and how much has that been saving us monthly on revenue? How much are we collecting monthly from the tenants who stay there? What I heard mainly out of this thing is that they need like one point eight million and it's all for parking lots, like seventy-five parking lots. Well, if we divide that by seventy-five people, that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year for a parking space. It's probably more expensive than Chicago. Are these people paying for a permit to park over there? If we've got such parking issues, then people who are like the commissioners who only come once or twice a month, they need to give up their slots, they can park out in the street and give it to the people who come in here every day. So I would break down a lot more information than passing out this money tonight because I'd want to see some receipts and that's the biggest problem with this council. You continue to pass money and nobody asks for any receipts, ever. You take their word for it, time and time again. If this is such a safety issue, what if that would have fallen in somebody's head? That would have cost us more. It should already be shut down. The thing should, if it's this much of an issue, this should already be shut down. So you're also asking where this money is going to, like you can't take your vests and things from this account. Okay, so what is the commissioners willing to give back to you in order for you to take money from another area? Because they're never willing to give back any money. You know, and the biggest problem with watching this whole thing, you need about four hundred thousand for these officers and you can never come up with the money. But the commissioners come up in here and you come up with the money every single time. It's a huge problem. That money that was placed that we've made interest off of, that money was made off of all of our money, not the commissioners' money. So a lot more money should be coming back to the county instead of going to those commissioners. We can live without the Bronenberg, put some projects on hold then. They don't have to have everything. And here we are again, if we don't fix this today, we're going to have this problem and then it's going to shut down. Why are we always in such an urgency? I don't understand it. They bought this building. The whole reason why you have money in a fund is for these reasons. The reasons why people, I have rental properties, people pay me, I put that over to the side. If a roof goes bad, I take it out of there. I mean, they should be doing some type of budget. You guys have over eighteen million dollars in the rainy day fund. The taxpayers don't need to be paying more. That's crazy. You want to talk about other people who have rainy day funds, are they at eighteen million? So I would just say, you know, you need to use the maintenance fund and take it out of this five hundred and some thousand. You need to bleed it dry and see how well they can work with what they have. Make them live, give them a stricter budget here. But I would like to know if people are paying for a parking permit. And then, let's see, I hear you. I hear you, just like you got yours all done in three minutes. But you do need to put some things on hold, you do need to do better, and you need to ask for some receipts. And none of you are asking for that, so all of your fault for this.
Cheryl McKenny, I have several questions that I'm sure won't be answered, but I'm going to ask them anyhow. It's very disappointing that Rick doesn't know the monthly revenue that comes in from the lease on there. I just asked him standing back here, he said Star Bank needs eighteen spots to park in, that's what the lease agrees. I'm sure that the county can find eighteen spots to accommodate that lease. It's very concerning that we want to give, that the commissioners want another million dollars. We already gave them half a million dollars earlier this year and they're spending those on wants, not needs. The clock was a want. That clock does nothing to help the people in the community. It's a hundred percent a want. Bronenberg home, you and I can't drive back there, we can't use the building because it's gated off. It's again, it's a want, that's not a need. He's talking about running new water lines, for what? Who's going to use that building? We have officers, again, lining our walls again because they're standing here watching our council who were voted on by them give money away to commissioners for wants when they've got needs. A contract was signed, you're obligated to fill their contract. I don't want any of these guys to leave. I'm concerned, how are we going to pay for a new jail? Oh wait, it won't matter because we're not going to have any employees that are working in the jail. Because I talked to several of these men and women, they're walking if they don't get their raise that they were promised. And once again, at the last meeting, Todd made basically threats, it was a bullying move.
Yep, here we are again.
To Councilwoman Keller, when he said that if he wasn't giving them money for the FICA, he was going to pay it anyway. He just did the same thing. That's a bullying move. And I just, I don't like bullies. You know your employees, you know your FICA, you know what expenses you have, you know the difference between a want and a need. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, Lawson. I work and park in the Star Bank building every day. I would like to say thank you. It does need repairs. Not only does the COG office use that parking lot, Veterans Affairs, which has many disabled people, also use that parking lot. Veterans Affairs, the coroner's office, so there are people that are in and out of there. I just want to say thank you, it does need repairs. I'm going to look back on my phone, this is my reminder.
Anyone else?
David Sargent, Anderson, Indiana. In listening, looking at the structural issues, the fact that we do have offices over there for county government, that in most offices over there, it is open to the public. There are a couple that aren't that you know I'm going to. But with those structural issues, the longer it's delayed, the more damage will be done and the more expense that we will incur. Thank you.
Lisa Summers, Alexandria. At the last meeting, the council had asked the commissioners if the money that they were to get would carry them over for the rest of the year. So now they're here again, asking for a million dollars. What, when is this going to stop? Like, these men and women are out here saving our lives. It's going to be on all of you if something happens to one of them because they don't have the backup. It will be on all of you.
Anyone else?
David, you know, Alexandria. I hear a lot of talk, and I hear how much a parking spot costs, which is kind of outrageous. And I don't see any benefit for me. He said you're going to raise my taxes again. I'm on fixed income, I don't make, I can't vote myself in a race. I hear a politician saying, we're going to have to have this, or we're going to shut it down. Now, do we have any engineers saying the same thing? Is an engineer going in there and said, it's going to last so long, or it's not going to last so long? Are we going to shut it down now or later? Is it worth three point one million dollars?
If the garage was to be leveled, how many parking spots would there be, and what would it cost to level it?
Jim Bauer, Lapel. I'm the precinct committee for Lapel, Stoney Creek one, but I also realize that the biggest problem I see right now, obviously, there is a problem with this building, there is a problem with the parking garage, but I also see a problem with public safety. I've seen it for quite a while, I sat back and listened to it. We had a fire department come before you that was denied funds. Now, that fire department is no longer in existence as of January one. We will be, we will be South Madison, because we can't maintain anymore. Now, we've got officers standing back here at the back of the room that also are public safety. I understand there's problems with this building, but I think we may need to start looking at public safety and quit worrying about everything else. The clock tower is not necessary. That's money spent that was ridiculous. The Bronenberg home, not saying that it wasn't ridiculous, but if nobody's using it and you can't give back to it, why are we fixing the Bronenberg home? It's been there forever. So, thank you, council.
Doesn't equal five hundred thousand. It's not equal five hundred thousand.
The major stuff we're hoping to?
It's going to pass.
That's the reason this is so urgent.
This didn't happen overnight. But it didn't happen overnight.
It's in the total report, but I can get that for you, I don't have that with me. But to answer a couple of those questions, to level the building, I just spit on with the, with the engineer, and to answer the question, yes, this report is from an engineer, and this is suggestions of the engineer. So, yes, we went over there, assessed and said, hey, we got to do something about this. We got engineers on, on site looking at it. This is an engineer's report. We went to a structural engineer, and then went, ended up going to structural care for the repairs. To level that building's about a million and a half. To build a new parking garage with ninety-one spaces, it's three point six million dollars. So, you're paying a million and a half to keep your ninety-one spots, I'm sorry, to keep your ninety-one spots, you're spending that eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand for a three point six million dollar building. The parking, I heard a question about the parking spaces, and could you give Star Bank the building spaces elsewhere? That answer is absolutely not, because just the county employees alone, there's not enough parking places to house all the county employees that work in this building, so there's some sitting on the street anyway, which is, is bad, because you have businesses whose parking places are taken up in downtown Anderson. That's, if you have a business there, you want somebody to be able to come and park. So, engineer, yes, to level that a million and a half. I understand the thought about the clock tower, but I would disagree with that, because that clock, if I remember right, the date on that clock is eighteen eighty-seven, I think. Sometimes you need a little bit of pride in your community, and that's, that's something that came from the old courthouse, thirty-eight thousand dollar expense, had multiple people come and say, we're so glad you're getting that bell ringing again, and the clock to just work properly. Electronics have to be replaced over time, and it's got to happen. The Scholar House, I hear a lot of comments about, you're not even using that building. Yes, we are using that building. Currently, we're not using that building, we're prepping it to use that building. Job source is moving over to the building that used to be day reporting, and they will be using the chapel for Scholar House programs, which are women with children that are going to college, and they will have programs there and use that chapel for that, try to get people on the right path, homeless, beaten, those type of ladies that have found themselves in a program that is helping them get a step forward in life, that have young children in that facility will be used for that. And that is totally in the spirit of why that place was built to begin with. That orphanage was there, and it was there to take care of kids in, back in another time, and that still plays in the spirit of why that existed to begin with. I got a report from someone not too long ago about a lady, we were trying to reach out, actually, and find people that might have spent time there when they were younger, when it was the Bronenberg home, and spent time in the chapel. And I'll try to do this without holding my composure, but there was a lady called the newspaper and said, had mentioned the story that was written in the newspaper about the chapel, and when we reopen that, she wants to go to the grand opening, excuse me, of that chapel. And she spent time there in nineteen fifty-five and fifty-six, and was adopted in nineteen fifty-seven. And the newspaper asked her the question, can I ask why you ended up there? And her story was, she lives in Greenfield, takes the Anderson newspaper, that's how, that's how she found out about it. So, she lived there in fifty-five, fifty-six, was adopted in nineteen fifty-seven, and her reason for being, for being, for being there was, her father was killed in an accident, and there was eight siblings in that family. So, she ends up there, and she lived there for those two years when was adopted, and the question was asked of her, did you ever have a chance to go to that chapel? And she said she went, I'm sorry, she said she went one Christmas, and Salvation Army was there, giving out gifts, and that was the first gift in her life she'd ever gotten. There's some history here, and I don't think it needs to be taken so lightly. It's very important, history's important, to know where you came from, where you're It's a very important thing. Sorry for my composure.